Great, let's get started then.
I take one second?
Oh.
Yeah, I basically answered my question. Audio is fine.
Okay, great. Um, welcome to the Tuesday, February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Ordinance Revisions Committee. This is a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. No decisions will be made by the committee, and we provide direction and advice to city staff and crafting recommendations to the full Planning Commission for any action. Uh, we're holding this meeting on Zoom, but we intend to conduct the meeting similar to an in-person meeting. However, if we have any technical issues, please be patient with us. The following committee members are present: myself, Ellie Abrams, Sarah Mills, Lisa Sauvay, and Sarah Hammerschmidt. Um, there are two opportunities for public comment during this meeting. We'll have one now and then one towards the end of the agenda. So this is the first opportunity for public comment. To address the committee, please use the raise hand button if you're joining via Zoom. And if you're joining on the phone, you can press star nine to indicate a desire to address the committee. Speakers will be identified by name or last three digits of your phone number when it's your turn to speak, and comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Hank, do you see any speakers who would like to comment at this time? Give it a minute. Sometimes there's a bit of a lag, so we can give it a second, I guess.
Absolutely. I was just going to say, in the spirit of, um, Manager Leonard, I will wait a second to see if anyone raises their hand, but I don't see any raised hands.
Great. Okay. Um, then we will move on to our regular business. So this is item three on the agenda: Office District Amendment Petition and Considerations. And we will first hear from staff for an introduction and then move to discussion.
Uh, thank you Chair Abrams. I just want to take a second to introduce myself and introduce staff. Um, again, uh, for, uh, those who may not be cited, who are joining us this evening. Um, my name is Hank Kelly. I use the them pronouns. I'm the Deputy Planning Manager. I have, uh, short brown and graying now hair. I am, uh, middle-aged, and I am wearing a white and black check shirt. Um, I'm joined this evening by, uh, Planner DeLeo, who, uh, can introduce herself in a second, but we also have two special guests. If you wouldn't mind putting in your video, Upashana, thank you. I'm going to also let, um, our Spring Break externs, uh, joining us from the University of Michigan, uh, College of Urban and Regional Planning, uh, introduce themselves as well. You can just, just say hello to, uh, the committee members if you'd like.
I'll, I'll go first. Hi, hi, members of the committee. I've seen some of y'all in talk, man. But, uh, nice to meet y'all in this setting. Looking forward to the discussions on the Office District. I'm Tahir. My pronouns are he/him. Uh, and I've been helping Alexis and Hank with the, with some of the research around this amendment to the ordinance. And I'm excited to hear your views on what we've been able to dig out till now.
Hello everyone, my name is Upashana. Um, I'm excited to be here. I also helped out with the presentation that you guys will see. Um, so excited to be here. It's, it's lovely to work with Alexis and Hank, so.
Uh, thank you. And Alexis is going to take it from here to walk us through the presentation that we've prepared for you.
Um, right. Um, in the spirit of introductions, I am Alexis DeLeo. I am a city planner. Um, I'm also middle-aged, but I think I'm older than Hank. And I have colored brown hair, which should be more gray than it is. Um, and I'm wearing a cream-colored sweater and, uh, reader glasses on my head. Um, Hank, do we, remind me who is running the, who should screen share powerfully?
If you don't mind screen sharing, uh, from the PDF, that would be great.
All right, um.
If you'd like for me to pull it up, I'm also happy to do that.
Um, I should be able to do this with minimal fuss because I am a competent planner who is proficient with technology.
You do exactly what I do, which is like talk your way through as you're trying to do something like slowly. It's like, I will get there eventually.
While Alexis is pulling that up, uh, this is Hank again. I wanted to mention for those who may be listening in, um, why we are not recording this meeting, and that is because, as Chair Abrams stated at the beginning, no decisions are made by this committee. Uh, this committee provides direction and advice to city staff. And so, uh, recent directives to record working sessions, um, uh, we do not interpret to apply to the Ordinance Revision Committee.
All right, as you know, I had it, and then I lost it. But no worries, not panicking at all.
Okay.
Okay, well, yes. All right.
Uh, Ctrl L should get you to full screen, Alexis, if you'd want to try that. Or you can go to View.
Did I just lose it, or did it?
It's still there. Um, just go, uh, to View and then select, uh, Full Screen. The top-left File, Edit, View.
All right, still trying?
That works.
Sweet. Okay, tonight, um, has mentioned, but I got to start from the top, out of habit. Um, talking about the Office District, we had a petition to amend it, and we'd like to introduce and talk about some further considerations. Um, I will be going through, um, in tonight's meeting, the, um, discussing the petition itself, which is to expand the allowable uses in the Office District to include event space, and reviewing some near-term improvements, and, um, introducing and considering some long-term improvements. We have a petition to add one particular use in one particular district. But I'm a city planner, and it's figured it's a good time to, um, or I always want to take a moment to think about the bigger picture. So while we're talking about event spaces in the Office District, we have been collecting some small tweaks that we'd like to make, little improvements, um, where we can. Um, and also, we should probably talk, uh, take this opportunity to think even more broadly. Do we take on, um, all of the zoning districts adjacent to residential, which kind of act as a buffer, which is what the Office District is supposed to do? Um, uh, but all of those zoning districts that are adjacent to residential that, uh, serve some standalone purposes. We have eight of them. Should we simplify them? Uh, the Old District is really no longer a single-purpose district, and I'll get into more of all of this as the presentation goes. Um, it's now sort of a limited commercial district, a C-light district, to be frank. Um, so maybe let's look at this holistically and even just set the stage to craft a work program. Um, I'll ask Hank, uh, Deputy Kelly, I should say. I'm gonna say that from now on. Um, I will ask Deputy Kelly to step in and, uh, give you a little teaser about a, a Radcom doctoral fellow who's probably joining us in the summer.
Um, sh- sure. Uh, our department, as you can see from the tonight's meeting, is looking to, um, uh, provide opportunities for early-career planners and also connect and engage more with the, uh, wide network of universities and colleges that are in southeast Michigan, that have planning and related disciplines. Um, as part of that, we are participating in the Spring Break Program. But we were also asked to participate and advertise, uh, work that may be of interest to a doctoral fellow. Uh, and we will be hosting someone this summer. One possible area of work is to look more holistically at opportunities to, uh, collapse zones or simplify zones and harmonize some of the things that may conflict across them. Um, we have not decided in a firm way if that will be the exact work program, but it's one of the possibilities. So just know that we may have, uh, someone very smart to augment staff over the summer, uh, which could help us carry this forward. Thank you, Alexis.
Well, yeah. So it's, uh, getting a little stage setting there. So next, I'm gonna move into talking about the petition we have before us. Um, we received a, um, petition, um, as I mentioned, to add event spaces in the UDC. Um, the Office District, um, screenshot here of the intent statement. Um, it's intended for office buildings and, um, should be applied as a transitional use buffer between residential. And it formally said, um, between residential uses and uses, which would be incompatible in direct contact with residential zoning districts. Um, seemingly, it has one job. Um, but I'll argue, um, in the next, um, few minutes that it's not doing its job well anymore. Um, the O, Ann Arbor has over eighteen thousand acres. And, um, but just two hundred and, I'm sorry, three hundred and twenty-five of them are zoned O. That's two percent of the city is zoned O. So if it's supposed to be buffering some residential uses, it's just simply not large enough. It's not doing its job. Um, the, um, and here, I'll put, um, to here on the spot, um, he helped prepare this table. Um, the Old District is also not doing its job well, super well, because, um, these are all of the uses that you mostly find in contact with the perimeter of residential areas. You, you find the O District, but you also find C-one, C-one A, C-one AR, C-one B, C-two B, and you can-
Alexis, Alexis, sorry to interrupt. I don't think we're seeing the slide that you're referring to. We're still seeing the pie chart. Ah, there you go.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, yeah, so you can see here, we've got a table here of, um, and comparing what uses are allowed where. And, and here is where you can see, um, and then I'll, um, turn it over, or I'll offer to hear the chance if you'd like to, um, chime in. The Old District is not just office. It's not particularly single-use anymore. It allows, uh, residential, both single-family and multifamily. Special exception use, um, it allows, um, co-ops, fraternities, and sororities. It allows some personal services. It allows a limited amount of restaurant and bar. They're permitted by right as long as they are ten percent of the site size. Um, it allows hotels. Um, and again, limited, um, indoor recreation with special exception use. These span the hours of operation. There are increased hours of operation. These are arguably not office-type uses, but they're in our district labeled singularly O. Uh, to here, would you like to jump in a little bit, or?
I think you covered most of it, but what we tried to show over here is that almost everything that is, that, that maybe falls within a C-one neighborhood commercial zone, also in some way or the other falls in the Old District, except for a few outliers such as retail, commercial, trade schools, and general entertainment, which we thought maybe these, these boundaries are quite shaky. How has, how is it that these uses are excluded, but so many other uses? For example, if uh, general entertainment is out, but hotels are in, and hotels can have a conference hall inside them where they can have some of these functions. So we just thought we'd put this table together to have a discussion on it.
Yeah, so as you can see, so as I alluded to, the Old District in practice has evolved a lot since its origins, which I have to assume were in the sixties. Um, the name obscures the variety of uses allowed. It is not just medical, dental, and professional business offices. Um, and I'll, we'll move to, um, showing you where we have the Office District. Um, it is a transitional, it's placed as transition between some commercial or higher-intensity uses and residential, but you'll often also find just islands of office, of office zoning, seemingly buffering nothing. Um, and here I will show, um, and, uh, um, Upashana has helped a lot tremendously with, uh, preparing these maps. So, um, you would like to jump in, go right ahead, um, talk over me, you have to do it. But, uh, this is the Packard-Platt area, and you can see the red is commercial, the blue-purple is office, and the yellow is, uh, residential. And this is sort of like following a little bit of the classic style, what it's in the intent. It's saying it should be buffering the uses that shouldn't be in direct contact with residential. But even here, it's not doing a fantastic job. There's a lot of places where it is not buffering.
Yes, so, oh, sorry. Uh, so I was, uh, when I was looking at the zoning map, as well as the Google Maps, I was looking at what exactly is in the Old District, so that entire area is like a strip mall. So there is, that doesn't make any sense when you have commercials so side-by-side, and um, when its initial interest of Old District was to buffer, um, the R-four or like residential zoning. So to have an entire strip mall that surrounds the residential isn't really valid anymore. So that was one question that was arising.
Yeah, but here in this slide, you can see it's kind of acting as a buffer in some, in some spots. But if you move to other spots, um, and this is the Old Fourth Ward. Um, here, it, here's Community High, here is the Nursing School on this side. Um, got two spots that are trying to act as a buffer, but they're not nearly broad enough. But then you have like an island here of office in the C of residential. And that's not necessarily bad, but this is arguably not providing that transition that it's supposed to be providing. Um, and I've moved, um, and I believe this is our, our last example. Um, we've got some areas of office zoning buffering Michigan Stadium from the, from the neighborhood. This is in the Almendinger and the stadium area. Um, and it's doing a, a decent job here. Um, as well as over in the Packard and twenty-three area, but it's not complete, it's not, um, full, and, um, and here is more functioning the, more functioning as a buffer from the highway. But is this, this is, does it need to be this, so, single-purpose? Um, is where we're making the case. Um, for the text amendment itself, now that I'm trying to give a context of where do we find office? What are the uses that are permitted in the Office District? The petition has offered in a, um, a definition of event space um, to add to the land, to add to the UDC. Um, and it asks that event space be a permitted use in the Office District, and the request is simply is just the Office District. It provides or suggests a definition, um, that is a facility where space for, uh, where space for special events occurs, and they're um, defined, there's, um, including a agreement between a private group and the facility, talks about, um, I'm on the wrong, the special event may include things like celebrations and ceremonies. Um, to be honest, the definition itself, I think, needs a little bit of work. I don't love the proposed definition, but I appreciate that there is a proposed definition. And this is an easy fix to, to work on the definition. I think this one particular blurs the line between us, event space and a special event. But that's fixable. It's more of the concept that I, I agree with the premise and the concept. Um, the petition itself, um, suggests that adding event space to the Office District would complement the other Old District uses, works with the concept of integrated land use, um, encourages a compact pattern and so forth, uh, strengthens the economy, can contribute to our sense of community here. Um, and it is, they make a valid point. Um, office space is, demand is decreasing across the city. We have a, we're having an increased amount of vacant office. And we would be helping out our community by expanding the permitted uses in the Office District. Uh, to here, did you want to add anything to, um, our information about office vacancies?
Yes, we reviewed, we reviewed the Swisher surveys, which look at three hundred and five commercial buildings in Ann Arbor, and we see that it's, uh, it's almost doubled in the last five years, the share of, of the share of occupied office space in the city. And just in general, overall space in Ann Arbor, commercial space in Ann Arbor is also not being rented out, so our research kind of indicates that the petitioner has a point and that the data does align with the petitioner's claim.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so our preliminary analysis of the petition is there is a gap in code regarding event spaces. They are not mentioned. Um, as I suggested, I don't, I'd like to work on the suggested definition of event space, but that's fairly easy. Um, but it only suggests that the event space should be added in the O District. But, um, I think it would, um, be an overall improvement if we also include it in the commercial, everything that starts with a C, the D downtown, and the TC-one districts. These districts already allow restaurant use, which serves as our proxy currently for, uh, event spaces. Um, and next, I'm gonna also go in some pros and cons and neutral considerations for the ORC. Um, there is, we do have a gap. You will not find the word event space in the UDC right now. We're using restaurant as a proxy. Um, it is about the closest thing that we have. If someone were to call and say, hey, where can I put event spaces? Absolutely, I would say in any district that starts with a C, D, or T for the commercial, the downtown or TC-one, because that's where restaurants are allowed, and a, uh, say a wedding reception, a catered wedding reception, or a catered, um, conference is kind of a restaurant for one day, and you just might have those every single day, new group. Um, in the Old District, restaurants are also allowed as an accessory use. So this specific petition before us, um, event space would kind of be allowed, but it's proportional to the size of the development, and ten percent may, and limited, uh, ten percent of the size capped at twen- twelve thousand square feet. Um, that may be appropriate for a sit-down restaurant, but it does not work universally for event space. Um, I think I mentioned a couple of times that we wanted to clarify the definition, so I'll sort of skip that one over a little bit. Um, and the petition, though, um, has pointed out, um, it's sort of like, thanks for pointing that out. It's not, they are a unique district. They, they don't rightfully belong as a version of restaurant. So it is appropriate to add them, um, to the UDC. The question would be more, what about adding them specifically to the Office District? And here we have, um, listed some pros and cons, some just neutral facts. Um, adding it to the O District, um, just would harmonize and make all of our mixed-use districts a little bit more similar. Um, the, oh, it's a fact that the Old District varies a lot in character. Some are surrounded by residential on all sides. Some are actually serving as buffers. Um, and we do get questions about rezoning from office to commercial, because they are a more useful, more functional mixed-use district. Pros to adding the event space in particular, it adds a missing land use category, makes it easier to administer. Um, it promotes adaptive reuse of surplus office space. The nature of office space, um, particularly newer office space, can probably easily accommodate these things with little to no major renovations. Office typically has very wide open areas. They have the right number of bathrooms. They have the accessibility, probably lends itself to, uh, event spaces easily for adaptive reuse. Um, allowing this new use could possibly stimulate the local economy. When you have events, you usually have staff at these events. Maybe you have outside vendors. A con would be, it is intensifying the uses permitted in the O District right now. And it might bring some uses that have elevated, um, noise or traffic or another intensity of use. It is moving away from the strict definition of office in the intent. But it is not moving, it's not moving as far away from what you actually find the reality in the Office District. Um, we slightly moving into our, while we're at it, um, but actually, no, take that back. Just speaking about the, um, adding the use in the Office District, just wanna remind that zoning districts are not the only tool to facilitate harmonized mixed-use neighborhoods. We have traditionally relied heavily on the separation of land uses and listing very specifically the permitted uses, and if it's not permitted, it's prohibited. But we can use other tools. We already have noise regulations. There's a chapter in code that, uh, addresses noise regulations. It applies citywide to every land use. We can also talk about land use separation, so uses are okay as long as they are perhaps um, separated between same uses and event space separated from an event space, or a distance between different land uses. Event spaces can, has to be X feet from, so far from a residential district. We can use things like conflicting land use buffers. We can use form-based standards or other performance standards if there is a concern that adding this use might negatively impact its adjacent uses. Um, now I will move on to, okay, so in addition to this, using all my planter, planter, using all my planner brains and saying, let's think big picture here. We have a, um, a little list of things, a sort of a wish list. I'd like to clarify and update the personal services component that's permitted in the Office District. Like to, um, reevaluate what those personal services might be, maybe remove some of the special exception use requirements. Um, and allow some, promote, if you will, some certain uses, um, up in the Office District. The definition of personal services, which, um, are allowed in all of the mixed-use districts, except the Office District, um, says that they are informational, instructional, personal improvement, personal care, and similar services. Um, it implies, because of the name "personal," that these are one-on-one. We, yes. Um, but we get questions, and it gets au- it can be awkward and tricky to, uh, interpret, how do you provide yoga instruction? Is it okay if it's one-on-one, personal yoga instruction? But, um, but it's not okay if it's a group class. And what about, um, math tutoring? Math tutoring is, uh, instructional. It's informational. Um, um, but is there a line that needs to be drawn? Same thing with cooking classes, cooking cla- like, these are the kind of examples that we get sometimes, and we, it's difficult to answer. I feel like we're reinventing the wheel, and I'd like to stop. Um, some of the examples in the definition of personal services are not great. I don't even think they are personal services. Um, and so we'd like to work on that as well. Something an entirely different land use. Veterinary, um, animal boarding and kennels are all lumped together as a single land use. I think there is a difference between a veterinary office or clinic and the kennel and boarding aspect. I think a veterinary office functions a lot like a medical or dental office. So I'd like to promote that, if you will, uh, and separate that, and, uh, permit it in the Office District. Um, here are, um, here is a list of what is permitted, um, in the Office District in the residential category. This is the list. Um, in the public and institutional category, you will see, uh, what is listed as well. Uh, and in the industrial, um, you'll see in hotel that, um, uh, public and private higher education is permitted and public K-12 schools, but you'll notice that private K-12 schools are not permitted. Um, and there are other, um, uh, functions such as, again, the limitation, personal services, but beauty salons only. I'd like to suggest, while we're doing this, while we're considering the event spaces in the O District that we promote from special exception uses, these specific uses, uh, land uses that are currently required special exception. And they are fraternities and sororities, student cooperative housing, club headquarters, community- And they are fraternities and sororities, student cooperative housing, club headquarters, community centers, religious assembly, private K twelve schools, hospitals and veterinary offices, uh, and indoor recreation. And then I'd like to promote from not allowed at all to permitted trade schools. That this is something that we'd like to tack on to the event space petition. And then we will morph into sort of setting the stage, introducing maybe an ideal. If we could, or if the ORC would like to revisit the intent and the pur- purpose of the os- office district and to consider opportunities to collapse the zones. Um, does the office district adequately provide for that transition between residential uses and uses which would be incompatible to zoning districts? Shouldn't it do that anymore? What about the other districts that you will find adjacent to residential uses? Should they be called on to do the same thing or vice versa? Should it even be a job of any zoning district? What are, should we even be trying to buffer and separate land uses? Or should we be trying to bring land uses closer together? They don't need to be buffered by an entire zoning district. Maybe just particular uses need some performance standards. But in general, you want mixed uses. You want to be able to have what you need and where you need to shop and work and play close to where you live. Um, I may have blown right past opportunities for Deputy Kelly and Tahira and Sana to join in. So if they have, unmute yourself and come off.
You're doing great, Alex.
Okay, I may have done that, but just jump in. But otherwise, um, in like sort of the wrapping up um, of this big, big picture, um, what does the ORC think we should divide into do right now? Just focus on the O district, maybe some of the wishlist items. And then what do you feel about these opportunities to collapse zones? O and C one are increasingly overlapping. There's seems little reason. There's challenge of interpreting why these are separate anymore. Is there a rationale between the O and the O R L, which is Office Research and Land Industrial? And then just the R E zone, we haven't really talked about the comparing those uses, but why are they separate? Um, and could we do this faster? Um, say this year? Could we incorporate this into the comprehensive plan? But um, these are the, these are the, the three questions down for tonight. The petition that we have at hand, your feedback on that. What do you think about our little tweaks that we might want to do? And then um, your um, thoughts and willingness to tackle an even bigger picture. Um, would you, would anyone like me to leave a particular slide up or this one is fine? I'm gonna go with this one.
Or maybe, or maybe no slides. We can see each other a little bit better.
I see, that's why I asked.
Thank you.
All right. Okay.
All right, thank you. Um, all right, so we're now in discussion. Is there anyone who would like to start us off? Yeah, Commissioner Sovey.
So many thoughts. Um, I think maybe I'll start with the craziest idea first, which is while going through the use tables and event space and asking the question of definition, I go to the building code and I see it like, building code is statewide. And if we're talking about adaptive reuse, the more we can reconcile um, building code intensity of use with planning code. Uh, the more those type, the types of buildings we put in a zone can move between different uses. Uh, we're not gonna build a bill, purpose built a building to the building code standards that only fits like the Venn diagram of allowed uses between them. So I think the first thing I offer up, this sounds like a bigger project, is to actually look at um, the use classifications in the Michigan Building Code, cuz there's five assembly uses that rank in intensity. And so I would actually recommend that this be considered an assembly use um, instead of an event space. Um, and assembly use ranks from things like churches to bars and restaurants, to stadiums, right? And so each of A one through A five kind of ranks that intensity. Um, other example, there's a business use, so a B zoning and a business use intensity in the, in plant, in the building code makes a lot of sense. Even there's four R intensities. So there's R one through R four. R one is like um, multifamily residential, I think. R two is hotels and uh, things like that. So like it, they really line up actually pretty well if we like built the table along those together. So I would just kind of like make a recommendation to start thinking maybe in reconciling our kind of construction codes between these two built environment scales. Um, and then I think the thing that I didn't see is the area height and placement table as explicitly correlated. So I kind of pulled that one up to see like, O has no floor area. Yeah, um, min or max, right? But it has a seventy-five percent F A R, but no. And fifty-five foot height, which cl- I guess most closely aligns with C one B. Um, but we would actually be reducing height to fifty feet. So like the, that's probably the closest if we switched it into a C category, but they're not the same. So are we getting more non-conformities out of it? Do we need to consolidate the C categories too? Um, so yeah, from the use stage, I would actually say maybe we take a whole look at, looking at building code because that's gonna be more consistent too. Like if we actually use those terminologies, building code has been tried and tested both nationally and like through the state and through several projects that it probably has a lot less gaps to fill. If we want to take that strategy towards the comprehensive plan. Um, and then evaluation for this, I would say, looking at area height and placement next. Um, to see how close that matrix is. I think having that matrix of uses was really helpful to see like how common all these things are. And if we have like five zoning districts and every single one changes in height by like five feet, like just average that out sort of thing. Let's clean this thing up. So, and I think that goes a lot to, you know, Brett's intent of unzoning a lot of this stuff. So I appreciate the effort and I just want to even like push it further. Um, like how can we get twenty less pages in the UDC by cleaning up a lot of these tables? So that's my kind of high level, which sounds like a lot more work and I recognize that. But maybe just, and I'm actually ha- happy to kind of help if there's a way to work with staff um, from the architecture and building code side to, to figure out um, how to get that process started. So I'll offer that up too.
Commissioner Mills.
I think what I say follows on nicely cuz I, I have, have in my thing churches. So um, one of the things that, I mean, just to make everybody aware, like right now staff has an interpretation, right? Of like how they're treating the gray line. But once we define event space, like it now says like this is event space. And so if we put, oh, it, it's only in the office district, my understanding of how it works is like that would be only where it is. So first of all, I think this is really, because now the ambiguity is gone. But we have to make sure that we're carrying forward kind of what staff's, you know, if, if what staff's current interpretation is um, to those other districts. So I like this. I think, uh, thanks for thinking beyond just the narrowness of what the, what the petition was. If I understand correctly, that right now staff's interpretation, which makes sense. This operates a bit like restaurants coming in, like it, it, the functionality of an event space would be sort of like that. That you're, that's allowed in C, D and T C districts. And from the amazing maps and kind of analysis showing those are the districts that where O is not buffering. Those are the ones that are buffering. Like this to me functionally doesn't reduce any of that buffering function from, from residential. Because it makes sense to carry it through. So I like the idea of harmonizing and, and so I'm comfortable with this as a uh, a use, an allowable use, a permitted use in all, in, in O plus the C, D, T, C districts. The question that I have is that in terms of like how it operates, and thank you for bringing in the assembly. This is where churches come in, is that, I mean, I don't, I think what we need to make sure we're thinking through is how church functions work. And not just necessarily church functions. Like I don't know what our rules are honestly in the city, but those are often, they have a big parking lot and they often have a big gathering space. And so in terms of like making things useful throughout the week and not having a parking lot sit empty or a building sit empty, like that seems like good use of that infrastructure. And so I wouldn't want our, what we're doing with, by defining event space disallow a s- like assembly spaces, uh, disallow churches from, from being able to do that. And so I, I don't know how that currently works.
I'll jump in quickly, but I don't want to ruin the ORC flow. Um, churches um, are religious assembly and it has its own line. And they are permitted, they are special exception uses in the residential districts. And they are permitted uses in the um, all the mixed use except O. O still requires them to be a special exception use. And it was one of my examples. So while we're talking about it, la- why don't we do this? Why don't we promote religious assembly also to permitted? Um, or the flip side, depending on how you feel, um, I would say that event space maybe should be e- on par with religious assembly. So if you are not promoting relig- religious assembly, maybe consider keeping event space as a special exception use.
Yeah. So I would just like put that in your mind because I think that there may be questions about, uh, maybe the religious religious events operate differently than, I mean, they, many, many of these buildings can have, you know, you could imagine them being used for commercial purposes. And I don't necessarily, maybe that's a bigger conversation too. Like that falls into like, we need a bigger conversation. But like, I, I think that that's, it irks me when we've got parking lots and big buildings that just sit empty. And so that gets into my other thing too. I, I welcome kind of thinking through what thinking through getting rid of O entirely. The idea of walking by a empty parking lot, an empty office parking lot to get to commercial, like if that's what it's supposed to be buffering residential uses from, like is antithetical to walkability. And like the things that we don't allow in offices are the things that people want to live by. So like wanting to live by restaurants and wanting to live by re- like, that makes it walkable. Um, so I, you, I'm and maybe this is right, drawing through too much of our like beloved local institutions, right? So Jefferson Market or you know, like Zinger, what, name your thing. Like, so I just think rethinking that entirely makes a whole lot of sense. Um, and, and harmonizing like Commissioner Sovey said with the building code is super, super sensible. So that we don't have multiple definitions. And maybe we can, in terms of improving your definition, pulling from there. Um, pulling from that definition may be useful. But thanks for, I, again, I just think it's great that that you're using this opportunity from a petitioner to think more broadly. So.
So I'm, oh, I'm kind of, oh.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna sum up, so. I was gonna say like, I am sort of hearing from who, um, but it's probably premature to sum up, but I'm hearing support for the um, the petition itself at hand and our sort of minor amendments. But I um, maybe discussing further like the revisiting the O. And I say this because um, I think if you look in the definition, like this is part of why it needs to be revisited. I didn't mean the definition. You look at the intent. And it said that, that it's a trend, it's a buffer between residential uses and non-residential. But it's not clear what's buffering what. Should the O district buff, insulate the residential uses? And I would argue it doesn't do a good job of that, so we should revisit that. Or is it supposed to insulate some particular land use, let's say um, some sort of um, industrial plant? And if that's more fodder for, that's a terrible word, but more a rationale that it should be redefined and revisited. Um, because if it's this unclear to us, then it's not useful. I'll stop.
Commissioner. Thanks. Um, I have a feeling that when the petitioner brought this petition, they did not expect this to sort of like, I feel like this, because your presentation went on, it was just like more and more and more. But I, I think a lot of it makes sense. Um, I really liked what Commissioner Sovey said about looking at the building code. Cuz as I was sitting here like listening to your presentation, like I'm just struggling with like, what is an, I was trying to define event space too. It's like, well, like what is a space that wouldn't be also a restaurant or wouldn't be also, I guess just like a standalone base. It's not commercial, but they don't want this in commercial, which I was also confused by. So if we go with event space as a use, I would agree, like, just put it everywhere. Um, I would also agree, but, but I think, I liked this assembly idea and like the different intensities of assembly because I think like, like an event space can be a restaurant, right? Like it can be a church. It can be like all of these other things. But then it can also be like a very standalone thing. And then everything gets like so much more overlappy. It's so much more complicated. And so on that point, like I also like the idea of maybe looking at just eliminating office. But then we've also got the comprehensive plan coming up, as you've pointed out. And I feel like this probably should be somehow wrapped into all of that. Um, and then I had a, a process question on like just adding in a use. You know, going through all of this TC one rezoning, Alexis, you had to do like all of the notification to people, you know, surrounding. Do you have to do the same thing to add a use? So if we added this to O, would you need to notify everyone in there that we're, all of us that were adding this new use to this district?
Text amendments have different notification requirements than map amendments. Um, the property owner needs to um, be notified, um, required. Um, the community, it, it's a more of an, of a public notice situation with a text amendment. Um, at your direction, we could investigate contacting the properties within the O district. In the big picture, there's not that many, but it is not required. So no, the process is somewhat simpler.
Okay, I was just sort of thinking through like, is there a way to do this in stages? Because if at some point we did say like, all right, we don't want, we want to get rid of O, I assume you'd go through a rezoning.
A map change, yes, a map change would notify each one of them. There would be pub- there's a public hearing with a text amendment as well. But um, they are similar processes, but they're slightly different between a text amendment and a resign.
Yeah, so I guess I wouldn't want to do it twice.
Oh, I mean, I, I get it, but like, don't let the process get, like, stop you from doing what's right. If you think doing both is right, then we should do both.
Well, I think one is like a gateway to another in a sense, potentially. Like, like if we just said like, okay, we'll add event space, like this is low hanging fruit, just like add it in. Obviously, there's a reason the petitioner wants this. We, you know, why stop it? Oh, why not just include it everywhere? Like, that seems easy. But then when you sort of dig down into it, you're like, hold on, like there's all of these other things that we could kind of collapse and make things simpler. I mean, you certainly could do it in these phases, like we're doing other stuff phase.
Yeah, well, that's where to, uh, uh, again, sort of, um, I think that staff, we would recommend the, the petition at hand. And we probably, um, when we put it forth to you, we tack on some things that I'm seeing a little nodding. So I'm, I think we'd probably do that. But for you tonight, maybe where to draw that line between tack it on to this petition at hand and what to maybe start tackling in a different but immediate conversation. And then we have an opportunity maybe over the summer to get, to dive deeper. Um, and it would go in advance of the comprehensive plan. Um, and then where, but to, uh, the question for, should we push it a little bit in stages? Should we not push it at all? Should we wait, hold on to this event space? I don't know. I don't think so, but um, I do want to be clear or I want to get that clarity.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I guess from my perspective, as long as we have a clear definition of event space and it makes sense within the other uses and we're not like, some of the other uses, I think even pointed out are kind of ambiguous. Um, I think that's fine. I think it's pretty simple to just sort of add it in, tack on the other things. I just feel like getting rid of an entire To just sort of add it in, tack on the other things. I just feel like getting rid of an entire district is probably a bigger conversation, whether or not it's part of the comprehensive planning process, which I sort of feel like it should be if we're getting rid of a whole. But again, like you said, it's like two percent of uses, right?
Yeah.
So. And if it's so, some, I don't know, but I think, I think it is sort of, maybe it is sort of too separate. Take care of a petition now.
Okay.
I'm so curious why they even. What event space are we getting?
Well, remember our zoning has its roots in the sixties. And what made perfect sense at the time that sometimes does not make perfect sense.
Yeah. And I think that, that, that's a perfectly fair point, especially the way that, you know, we're trying to promote all this walkability and bikeability. And when you have these like, the zone that is supposed to like literally separate, you know, particularly commercial from residential, like it doesn't really make sense anymore. I'm all for simplification. The UDC is just too, it's too much. I can't keep it in my brain. I don't know how you do.
It's, it's all I do. Don't ask me my name.
So it seems, I mean, I think I agree with all the comments so far. I think that the addition of events based as a use makes a lot of sense. And I also agree that we are probably due for a more holistic rethinking of all of the zoning categories and that that would be something that would happen in a comprehensive plan. So beyond just eliminate, I think if it was just eliminating office, that would be one thing, but it sounds like there are other conversations afoot, like rethinking some of the C districts or uh, so it seems like that's a larger piece of the puzzle that would be more appropriate for the comprehensive plan. I think I have just the tiniest like, I don't know what to do, I guess, with the fact that we're going to leave the state, the intent statement for the O district the same, but add a use category. We, I guess what we're saying is it's already, the permitted uses in that category already violate the intent. And so that's something that needs to get redone. We don't, we're not going to do that at this time, like this month. But one thing we could do to bring things more in alignment would be to have event space be something which is allowed there and in these other mixed use categories. Mixed use zoning districts. Then there's this list of minor amendments that you put on the table that I think we probably should talk about maybe almost one by one, because some of them are small, like separate veterinary offices and make veterinary offices a permitted use or allow trade schools. And then like maybe the personal services one is a bigger thing to bite off or a bigger conversation to have. I'm not sure, maybe not. And then one I would like to hear from people on is about removing, moving from special exception to permitted use things like fraternity sororities, cooperative housing, et cetera. So maybe we could, like, it seems like there's general consensus that we would give like a thumbs up direction to planning about the addition of event space and also a thumbs up about the idea of rethinking the O zoning district. Specific, you know, in a bigger sense, but maybe that wouldn't, that's like a different, a second, second phase of this work or something that gets folded into comprehensive plan. But do other commissioners have thoughts about the, the, uh, what's in like section two minor amendments? From the staff memo, so like rethinking personal services, removing special exception requirements. Yeah. Commissioner Sove.
I think this is where like my mind goes to the building code because building code is so much crafted in terms of the familiarity within a space and the intensity of use of that space. Right? So assembly of like, people that go to church every Sunday are more familiar with the space versus people that go to a wedding in a banquet hall once may be less familiar. So the amount of exits and things like that. So that's like, at least from my approach, things like this, like that thing are probably actually going to fall as Alexis, you talk about like a vet clinic and a dentist are probably similar in the building code in terms of they're in group B business together. Instead of vet and kennel, which is going to be probably in storage or, you know, like some other building code, as I'm like scanning over here. So like, I want to do that matrix. Maybe for my own benefit to see like how we might be ranking intensity of use from a land use policy versus a building policy. And if that can actually assist us to kind of reconcile some of these things, like it might be pretty clear cut. Once we, once we do a comparison about some of those shifts being really rational and being based in some kind of another code that's been adopted instead of kind of our, you know, speculation interpretation. So I think, I think that's where it's always helpful for me. Like it makes a lot of sense and it's going to make like even more sense if we can kind of rectify to like another layer of code and built environment. So I get it and I'm cool with a, a lot of those shifts. And it seems like the special exception use stuff is already shimming its way towards use because they're in the allowed categories for the C. And most of the C is what's touching R. So again, the special exception use is like the buffer that doesn't exist. And I was like, my last point is no unconflicting land use buffers. It's on our work plan to get rid of. So we should not be using that as a tool. I think it's a broken tool. So it's my other two cents.
Just to clarify, are you proposing that that kind of side by side matrix comparison be something that happens between now and when these revisions would come before the commission?
Yeah, I like, and that's where like, I, I'd be happy to help kind of build that table out. So that similar to like going from one to the other, we can kind of see this is how they kind of match up now. If they kind of reshuffled into those categories, a lot of them might still fall into the same like primary or secondary category of the building code. So I, I'm happy to help with that.
Uh, if I could just chime in, this is Deputy Kelly. We really appreciate the suggestion. Uh, it's not one that we considered, but it is part of, you know, why you're here to help us. And I also think that it would help us to work across the aisle more with the building department. I think you know, this could help in ways that we're not necessarily even conversing about right now. So I'm going to keep that in mind and I would like to take you up on that offer.
Yeah, I have to. Let's talk.
I also, uh, just while I'm unmuted, wanted to take a moment to express that, especially from Manager Leonard's perspective, the longer term rethinking of zones in particular, like collapsing and consolidating some of our C districts and how they might, just all of our mixed use zones is something we would like to treat in the comprehensive plan update. But that doesn't mean that there can't be some pre-work and thought in direction given to the consultant team that we might tee up in advance. So just because it is waiting for the larger conversation of the comprehensive plan doesn't mean that pre-work wouldn't be able to be integrated into that process.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills.
To your specific question, Commissioner Abrams, on feedback about some of those other kind of minor tweaks. My sense is, I mean, this school, the distinguishing between public and private school just seems like a very clear one that is a no brainer to move from special exception use to kind of permitted use. Similarly, it seems weird to me that fraternity sororities and student co-op housing is the only thing that's a special exception when any other kind of housing, unless I have got that wrong, is a permitted use. So that just seems very bizarre. I think that there's some other things that maybe are not of that same ilk in terms of like total outliers. And so, um, but maybe, but those are, those are the ones that strike me as kind of a no brainer. On the personal service, I mean, what I worry about on the personal services is that it's going to take a whole lot more effort than, and thinking through multiple new definitions and then thinking through like, okay, when we do that, it's not affecting just O. We've got to think about how it fits with all of the other districts, like all of the other things. And so, I don't know. If, if it's a smaller job than what I'm imagining it could be, I would say dealing with that right now. Otherwise I might put that on the like noodle on it for the, like the next iteration list. I don't know. Because I, I want to be cognizant of us not taking forever to respond to the petition because we've made it so much bigger. Ourselves.
Commissioner Hammer Schmidt, go ahead.
I'll just quickly agree. Um, I think removing the SEU stuff makes, it doesn't like, yeah, why, why are my fraternities and sororities it's also the event spaces. Uh, but it doesn't really make sense why they're the only one with the SEU. Um, and reading that, like the personal services kind of reminds me of our whole, um, when we redid, oh God, my brain doesn't work anymore.
Yes. This is why I think it's going to be bigger than what it actually seems. And I think, yeah, agreed.
Yeah. So I, I think I agree with Mr. Mills just like, maybe not that one. That's not a slow hanging of a fruit, but the other ones kind of do seem like no brainers to just tack on. Oh God, yeah, home occupations.
Um, yeah, I immediately thought of home occupation as well. So, um, just because that was before Deputy Kelly's time here, just, you know, was something we thought would be simple to redefine and to clarify home occupation. And then it became very complex. And I think we had to revisit it actually. Even after we had changed the ordinance because we made a mistake. So um, this feels like, yeah, of a similar category to me as well. Alexis, were you about to, or sorry, planner to Leo, were you about to?
Uh, I was going to jump in a little bit about the personal services. Side note, I'm so happy that everyone is now saying Deputy Kelly. So, so about the personal services, a little clarification. I guess I'm not in thinking a little bit more. The examples provided in the definition, they're examples. We, we can live with that. We can keep on living with that. But the, the code for the office district alone says personal services with all, it says only beauty salons of the component of personal services are permitted in the O district. Personal services are defined as an establishment that engages in the provision of informational, instructional, personal improvement, personal care and similar services. What do you, do you think that is not appropriate for the O district? I think we can argue, maybe, maybe it's okay. It's allowed in the commercial districts. But in the office district, we say, no, it is not appropriate to have provision of informational, instructional, personal improvement, personal care or similar services, except for beauty salons. We can also like sort of put aside, we don't even define beauty salons, but that's it. But more like, um, I don't think it's necessarily opening Pandora's box. We don't have to tackle the definition of personal services. But what I'd like to consider, um, and I'll say something more, but then in the end, we can maybe put forth, and then when it gets to the ordinance amendment, we can still pick and choose. You know, the, the planning commission has said like, I, I recommend these components, but we do not support this. Don't move this on to plan, to city council. But anyway, but it's more like, can we just revisit that portion of it? Should personal services be promoted to be all of them? Or should we just keep sticking with beauty salons?
Yeah, Commissioner Mills.
So to be clear, um, and I don't, I don't have the UDC in front of me. So like in the table, this is one where it's like an asterisk or something for personal services for every, this is, this the only place where there's a differentiation in a district between some personal services and not others. Okay. So that's different to me than like, so like making it simple and just say personal services, period. Which means it temporarily allows a bunch more personal services, but personal services is also like, it doesn't address the fact that it's a nonsense definition, not. But it does make it simple so that you don't have the weird footnotes because that is obnoxious and it doesn't, there's a whole lot of other things that are like beauty salons. So I would, I could be supportive of that. And, but this is one, like you said, I really like the way you guys typically lay things out where it's like, here are five different changes that we're recommending. So it's easy enough for us if there's not support among the full commission to take one out. So if that's the simple thing, I just don't want to, I, we, I do think that it makes sense to redefine personal services, but not now.
I agree. So what we're saying is instead of being limited to beauty salons, which we should have a conversation about just eliminating beauty salons as a term from the UDC, but, uh, it should just say, it'll just be personal services. I'm, I, I would support that.
Okay, I'm going to include it. I'm going to include it in my order.
Sorry Alexis. I think I got so like, I started going to that home occupations and got so scared. Um, I didn't realize there was like a two parter on this one. So yes, I would.
Slightly traumatic.
It is a terrible definition. We should revisit it. That opens up a whole can of worms, but I, yeah, get rid of that asterisk.
Uh, Deputy Kelly, do you feel like we've got good, like, or like are you wanting to, to talk a little bit more about the line between putting together a proposed ordinance amendment for the planning mission and how far to push that collapse consolidation reinvent line?
Um, well, I just want to step back a second because our chair asked us to walk through the minor amendments one by one. And we talked about personal services and beauty salons. I think there's consensus to not redefine personal services generally right now, but to flag it for some future time. Um, but did we get consensus on the, uh, from the changes to SEUs? I heard some people speak to it, but I don't. Did, did we want more conversation on that? We can pull up the slide with the pro, proposed promoted uses. Could you pull that up Alexis? It's, um, slide 25. I just, in the spirit of making sure we're walking through these. Is, so is there, uh, enough consensus on some version of this? Of course, it could still be further tweaks for full body consensus at the CPC table.
Um, what is the definition of club headquarters?
One moment.
I mean, I could look it up in the UDC myself. I didn't know.
I'll take this second. Uh, I think I'll get an email out tomorrow. I will plug while I'm going up to the Cs. There's an eighth edition of the UDC that dropped today. So if you like to keep a downloaded copy, if you like to keep a fresh copy, go download the eighth edition.
I do.
And C comes after club headquarters or community center. It's lumped together. Club headquarters or community centers, buildings and facilities owned and operated by a corporation, association, person or persons for a place of meeting, social, cultural or educational or recreational purposes to which membership or residency requirements are required for participation.
So it's, so it's an exclusive event space. We have to be a member. I, I personally would support what's proposed on this slide. I'm seeing a thumbs up from Commissioner Mills. Hammer Schmidt, Sove. Okay, great.
Thank you for, um, that clarification. So, um, from what I'm understanding, we will uh, move forward with the, uh, change to within O district, allow all personal services and not just define beauty salons. Uh, we will allow, uh, based on what I'm hearing, we'll make a proposal to allow event space within all of our mixed use zones. And, um, we will also suggest these, um, promotions to permitted. And then we will, uh, continue to workshop opportunities in the future and in tandem with the comprehensive plan update, the simplification of our zoning, overall zoning districts and, um, Overall zoning districts and, um, definition clarity, including to. The O district intent statement and personal services.
That aligns with my understanding as well. One thing that just came to mind. Currently in the O district, restaurant bar is an accessory use with a limit on 10% of the square footage. Is that something, um, that planning staff is interested in also looking at, or you want to leave that as is?
I'm happy to talk about it.
I think it's on the table. Yeah.
It suddenly seems out of whack now with what we've talked about, but maybe I'm not thinking of something that would be important to consider in that change.
Yeah, um, my memory is hazy, call it pandemic rain. Um, but it was a fairly recent amendment to allow the office in, I'm sorry, backwards, to allow restaurant in office. I feel like it was a two thousand and nineteen or twenty twenty amendment. Um, and I think it was sort of a compromise. They being accessory and with the size limitation. Um, we have lived with it for a few years. It's clear, we clearly have not been overrun with restaurants opening in office districts. I think anything is fair game to talk about. And so we can come back to you, we can talk tonight, we can come back with. A variety of things, um, not making it accessory, just making it a principal use. We can talk about upping the percentages or the, the cap.
I'm also noticing that, um, there is a cap on the number of seats you can have in a restaurant. In the C one district.
The C one district has for every single land use has an eight thousand square foot limit. For at any business is limited to eight thousand square feet in the C one district. And then I think it's and or restaurants, uh, fifty seat limit. I think that is, I think the intent there is to reinforce that that's a neighborhood commercial. It's supposed to be small. It's supposed to be not target. I think that's a slightly different conversation, but I'm, I know that, um, Deputy Kelly would love to talk about it. But also be like, I mean, is eight thousand, is, is that the right number these days? Fifty seats like does not seem, I, I, I get the, and probably would endorse. Some standards, performance standards to make sure that the, uh, um, a local district kind of remains. Local, um, but I don't know if those are the right performance standards anymore.
Yeah, Commissioner Mills.
My recollection of this, I mean, I think that we did take up the restaurant stuff pre-COVID. And this is, and I really appreciate the slide that was included in the deck about vacancy rates. And I mean, the big question that I have is we're talking, taking up office is like, what? Like COVID has changed office a lot, right? And like, it's not fair to, I think, I mean. It's, I don't know that it's fair to look at the numbers from like pandemic year, right? I don't know what the trend is, but my recollection from when we talked about this before was actually. There was demand for more office space than what we had available, particularly one of the things that I wrote on my list before I like moved on from that slide. Was once upon a time, there was a big, just like a, a big talk about large plate. Oh, I, I don't know if that's the right term, right? Like, and that we don't have enough. But I, it seems like, and this is where I'm welcoming, I'm really looking forward to the kind of conversation. Uh, among the full commission, unless anybody else can kind of fill that in on here. That is that my recollection of the history about why we didn't, it was a. Back when TC one, like before it existed. And there was a whole bunch of office in the area where we had big office buildings. There was some concern that there was still need for that. And if restaurants took over too much of that, that, that it would be problematic. And so that's why I remember us having like the limitation on the, on the, the percentage. So much has changed though. And I, I'm, I think that that would be really, really beneficial to. Pull into the conversation with the whole commission about. Is there's any other indication beyond the vacancy rate that like, actually we do have a need for particular office. Like buildings. If that's helpful to anybody or like jogs memories. And maybe you guys know more about, there was some nodding when I said large plate. I don't even know what that means.
Large contiguous floor plate.
Thank you. And is that, is, is, has COVID changed that?
Yeah, I mean, those, that's for a lot of the, the bigger companies wanting to have contiguous space. Who are stacking on multiple floors, but as you're seeing in San Francisco, everybody's vacated. Um, in that condition. So yeah, it's, it's changed quite a bit. Um, but what we were seeing prior to was because there weren't so many plates. Um, larger companies were grabbing a whole lot of small office space and like combining it back together. And so the small office, um, user was kind of getting pushed out by like a few larger holders. And so that really kind of changed the dynamics of, you know, a commercial affordability, I would say.
I think so, and, and a lot. Thank you. And my sense is I wouldn't want to go. Again, like we can make this as big as we want to make this, right? I think that, that. Being more flexible on retail, because I don't think that people are, um, on, on food, on restaurants. I don't think that people are opposed to restaurants in their neighborhood, but they don't want it to be a gigantic, gigantic thing, right? And so if we were to lift that, which I would be supportive of, I like the kind of protections. And again, I don't know if that's the right number, but I do like the. Maybe trying to get at the kind of what is neighborhood scale restaurant, if that's in the C one. A, C one, something, that makes sense.
C one, yeah. So to, to confirm, like, what I think I'm hearing from you, Commissioner Mills, is you would support moving restaurant, bar, food service. From accessory use to prim- to primary use. But maybe keeping the same limit that C one has, which is a fifty seat capacity. With an asterisk that we might want to rethink that capacity, but for now we could just align it with C one. Okay. Commissioner Hammer Schmidt.
Just another data point, and I don't remember details. This was not that long ago, but didn't we just approve a project downtown that converted office into like short-term rentals? Because they couldn't rent the office. So I mean, was it office? So it's just sort of another, I think.
Are you thinking of the George, which converted?
No.
Detail to, no.
Cross from the DTE building of the bus.
Didn't Ashley Muse want a text amendment?
Yes, it's Ashley Muse.
Yeah. So I mean, it's just, it's just sort of like, take the, the point that you're making. I think Mr. Mills is like, you know, offices, obviously like there's. Not as much demand for office, though. That to say, I would also be supportive of looking at, um. You know, removing the, the 10% and aligning it more with C one. I don't think there's any reason if we're doing all of these other things to this office district. To make it more aligned with commercial, given the state of office and the future of office. Throw this one in there.
All right. I guess a final question would be, would the ORC like to review us? An ordinance with all of this mapped out, or should we just move to public hearing?
I would support moving it to public hearing, to the full commission. I think there's been pretty, a lot of unanimity. These consensus and kind of clear direction.
Yeah, I know, but it's my job to ask.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I think we all appreciate the question. And, and some of you can disagree if you.
Um, then I think as staff, I think we have what we need. Um, the committee is free to discuss whatever you'd like to discuss. We can move on to, um. Uh, commentary as well.
Great. Uh, Deputy Kelly, were you wanting to jump in?
I was just going to recap for, uh, I. Kind of take a literal tact, like to make sure I'm getting clear direction. So I was just going to repeat what I heard so I could get confirmation from the commissioners. Uh, so things that we would do now and, um. Uh, craft and prepare for consideration by the full body would be to create an events based definition. Include that definition in all mixed use zones. Change, uh, the O district, um, personal services. Beauty salon to all personal services. We would, um, uh, take staff suggestions to promote SEUs and primary uses. Including, uh, promoting restaurant from accessory to primary use and aligning with the C districts. Uh, and finally, we would be creating for commission consideration, a comparison matrix of building intensity. And the building code with zoning with some help from Commissioner Sovey. And then later we would be considering the simplification, collapse of zones. And how that would work with our comp plan update. As well as revisiting definitions and, um, purpose statement, intent statement. Am I missing anything?
Not that I know of, that sounds.
And I'm, uh. I'm good.
Great, thank you. Um, item four on our agenda is communications to the ORC committee. I don't believe we received any this week. Or in advance of this meeting. Uh, item five.
I'm only gonna jump in with a communication to say on the record, the, the eighth edition of the UDC is available for anyone who wants to download the eighth edition.
Great. I'm very excited about that. Without any sarc- without any sarcasm.
And you can find it at A two gov.org slash UDC. So A, the letter A, the number two, the letter G O B dot org slash UDC. For Unified Development Code.
Thank you. Uh, so item five on our agenda is the second opportunity for public comment. To address the committee, you can use the raise hand button if you're joining us via Zoom, or you can press star nine if you're joining by phone. Speakers will be identified by name or the last three digits of your phone number. And comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and you can see a timer here on the screen if you're joining by Zoom. Uh, Deputy Kelly, do we have any speakers for public comment?
Uh, we have one hand raised at this time and Winston Chester, you have been unmuted. You're welcome to speak.
Okay, uh, can you guys hear me? Great. Well, first I just wanted to say thanks for the, the thoughtful conversation around this. I'm, I've actually introduced this petition. So, uh, you know, we want to re, we want to activate this office space that's unused. And, uh, it's great to hear this conversation kind of taking on this approach of looking at the whole comprehensive zoning. And the districts and, and that's really exciting. Um, and I did just want to comment on the, uh, the vacancy discussion. I think you guys mentioned earlier, what is the state of the office market, you know? And we've kind of got our boots on the ground every day and we're seeing still, you know, elevated vacancy. Lot of, uh, companies downsizing and, um. It's, it, it doesn't seem to be changing in the other direction anytime soon. So I just kind of wanted to give you guys some feedback on what we're actually seeing, um, here in Ann Arbor. And I think.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
We have no other hands raised.
All right, then we're on to item six, which is adjournment. Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.